Okay, I'm calling this meeting. Some decorum, please. This meeting number 1,624 to order at 6:03 PM. And there is no executive session, which is item two.
I move to approve minutes of school committee meeting 1623 for February 17th, 2022.
Kindness to two.
Jeffrey, and as a second?
I'll second it, but I have some edits.
And we are now inviting some edits. Thank you.
Um, yeah. Page three, I think you need to put the name of the company because this wasn't out of Jane Iredell's. It wasn't a personal one, right? It was a company.
It was a company.
So if she said Jane Iredell.
But that's the name of the company, right?
Yeah.
Clarify those Jane Iredell cosmetics.
Yeah, that's what I said. And also, it doesn't state which we had asked, we had asked Jane to send a thank you letter on our behalf. And that was approved.
Well, I thought separately from the one that I was, I sent on behalf of the district.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay, in that case.
I mean, maybe you did. I was just checking.
I thought there was supposed to be a thank you from the school committee.
Yes, that's what it was supposed to be.
Okay.
Okay, and then, um, page four. It was, it sounds like everybody was even the school committee, but it was a matter of change of jobs and a debt, et cetera, so.
Right.
So that should be changed.
In my report?
Yes.
I agree with that. I think a change would be four out of the five elected members are no longer sitting members and not top state. Because there was a debt and a moving out of town various reasons.
And change of job.
Yeah.
And then, page three superintendent's report. After decided, at the very end, and undecided otherwise, at bottom page three, by the school committee. Should we add a?
Is that the superintendent's report?
In the superintendent's report.
Oh, you mean until decided otherwise, until by this, in other words, it's important because we said that you, you would have said that reminded everyone. That it's the school committee.
The school committee has to do it.
Yep.
And there was a question I had. Oh, no, it was on the other, on the other end of this. Okay, I think that was.
I have one other edit myself, and that's on page one. And approval of previous minutes. On the last item to be corrected was replace R E A with S B R E, S B R S D. And I think it's S B R E A, which is what we really wanted.
Right.
Yeah, I must say that all of these letters that we have to understand what they mean is quite daunting for anyone who's not on within the circle of the committee and the school community. All right, so I'd like a vote given those edits. Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Danil?
Uh, Dana wasn't here.
Okay, Laura? Laura, did you hear me? We're voting on the minutes. Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Yes.
And Jane, so that's unanimous of the number, the members present. And we'll go on to item three B.
I move to approve minutes of school committee meeting 1618 from December the 16th, 2021.
Second.
I have an edit. I just saw on page four under two, there's just a type of round boards of five and a.
And I have under administration Nikki Conklin.
Yes. That's one of the business, one of our business people.
Oh, so it's a guest, not an administrator, right?
So they're our business service, so that's why I was there.
As long as you able to do it. And then on page two, on the early college designation initiative. As new business, instead of e-college, because people would think it's electronic, make it early college. And then identify John Weinstein as provost of Bard College at Simon's Rock.
The official name is Bard College at Simon's Rock. Okay. I'll take a motion to accept.
We have the motion.
No, to, I'm gonna, I'll take a vote to accept the minutes as corrected. Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Danil, what do you want?
Yeah.
Laura?
Yes.
Miss?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane, yes. All right, those minutes are accepted. And we go on to item three B enrollment. Does anybody have any questions? About the enrollment?
So the enrollment is a change of one student in total for March 1st.
All right.
Oh, God, that's very exciting.
Is there a student representative report tonight?
I believe so.
Yes. Hi.
Hi.
So as you may recall, we had kindness week and we asked people to sign a banner. It's a simple pledge saying that you promise to keep Mount Everett a kindness school. That is all completed and will be hanging it up in the library to display as a reminder of this. Upcoming, we have a spirit week in plan with a pep rally to highlight athletes. Yeah, so I've been receiving a lot of concern and people are coming towards me about field trips. Particularly the senior class with the senior trip. So if there's anything I can tell them about that.
I would say that when we get, we, we need to be working with you on a proposal when we're getting closer to the time and we see what regulations we were ready to change. So I think it's a little premature for us to say anything at this point, but of course, we want to do everything we can to have the seniors have the best experience they can within safe guideline.
Thank you.
I, that's sort of a non-answer, but that's, that's what you can do by that.
Well, that's fine. I didn't want to like put you on the spot or anything.
Bonnie?
First, do identify yourself.
I'm Michael Lawrence, 12th grade.
Okay, and then, wouldn't we have to have policy based upon any changes we make? Make recommendations because that's where we had restricted.
Exactly, that's what my point is.
We could be proactive on it in order to enable them to be some plant.
So we did, we were, Mr. Carpenter and I were talking about it today, saying that we were probably going to come forward with proposals to the committee.
Right.
To, because there have been some requests and, you know, depending on how things move forward with some, some of the things that are currently in place, we've thought it would be a time to have those conversations.
Because it always takes time for the students to raise money.
And we have, yeah, we have a meeting coming up, so we will next week, so maybe, maybe by then.
And I'm wondering if we have a student spotlight. Thank you very much, Michael.
Yes, so excitingly, Michael is also going to be our student spotlight today.
Wow, okay.
Yes, so yesterday we had a guest speaker come in to speak to us. His name was J C from, I'm forgetting the organization off the top of my head right now, but he talked.
Teen truth.
Teen truth, yeah, thank you. He talked to us about taking off the mask that we put on in front of people to make people like us and the different challenges that we face. And shared with us some very inspirational stories from teens across the country that he has met with and helped. And afterwards, we had the leadership summit, which was more team building activities. Like we got to hold our hands together and like undo the knot kind of thing, which really brought us together to show that like we're not alone. And then we got the chance to organize a list of problems that we believe students face in our community, in our school. And from there, choose three and come up with possible solutions to recommend to Mr. Carpenter. I believe that was being emailed to him either today or soon. And it, it was just honestly a good experience to feel heard and come up with not just problems, but also solutions to the problems.
Wonderful. Bonnie?
Question for you. How many people attended that and who attended? Was it representatives of each of the classes?
The leadership summit, there was 10 students, I believe, from each grade selected. They're selected by the teachers, I believe. For their leadership skills and stuff that they have displayed.
So Jesse, can you add to that? Without getting killed?
Michael, thank you. You did a good job talking about, but just to give a little more background. We, I brought J C Paul in after meeting him last summer, really for, I really liked the idea that he had of the leadership summit. But he also did in full assemblies for the entire middle school and then the entire high school. And in his assembly, he really talked to the kids about finding their voice. And he truthfully believes that students who find their voice and find their passion really increase community and really help to build positive school culture. And so a lot of what he did, there are about 15 minute assemblies. And then teachers selected 40 middle school students and 40 high school students to participate in the leadership summit. Which I got a lot of really positive feedback from the students about how much they enjoyed that. But it was, it was a really nice experience for him. And we haven't had a chance to do a lot of assemblies we did on the beginning of the year, so it was nice to get back to some sense of normalcy with that. But again, I was really happy with the program and, and I think the kids benefited from it. And I think, Michael, you'd agree with me?
Oh, yeah, most certainly.
Good, good.
Thank you. I mean, it's so great to hear something positive that's not, you know, that we're not dwelling on a bus track. It's about the things we really care about.
Yeah, and again, you know, just the, the idea of students being able to get together and talk about some of the things that they think some of their peers are going through. And, and sort of game planning solutions to what we can do to sort of help everybody was an added bonus to this. So I think, you know, we're going to look at that and maybe involve school council again. You know, really happy with school council and the way it's kind of come together this year. Students advocating for, you know, things that they need and, and listening to their classmates who have come to them. As Michael said, you know, a lot of kids are starting to talk about field trips again. And, you know, that's really the way it should go, like going to the student council representative, saying, hey, these are issues that we have. And then having them bring it to all of us. So it's student government in progress, which is very.
And we're faculty members in attendance?
They were there for the main assembly to the whole student body. And then I spent some time in during the leadership portion of it. But we did it here in the library, which putting 40 kids in this area is a little tight. So we kept it to really just the students, J C and me sneaking around watching what was going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, now we're going to go to public comments. And I'm inviting people who are on this Zoom to make public comments related to items on the agenda and to try to keep their comments to three minutes, so we have time for everyone. So I see Lucy Crascher's hand up and go ahead, Lucy. Can you unmute yourself, Lucy?
Yeah, just did. Thanks, Jane. For those who don't know me, I'm from the town of Alford. I was a school committee representative, Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee Representative many years ago, before some of you, certainly before Michael was born. And I am chair of the regional school district planning board. So I've got two requests for the school committee. One relates to the minutes you just approved. And in particular, the entry in section 14B that purports to record a vote that was taken on February 17th. The minutes are inaccurate. They do not accurately reflect the, the motion and vote that was taken. And so I would ask that that be corrected. In particular, that first motion, which was made by Bonnie, was actually the second motion in this series, but that doesn't matter. But in that first paragraph, it says that the motion was to hold a question and answer session on March 2nd at 3:00 PM for all faculty and staff and the regional school district planning board to enhance the small group discussions had with Beth Regalbudo. The regional school district planning board was not invited to that March 2nd meeting. The motion actually read, for all faculty and staff to enhance the small group discussions had with Beth about the work of the RSD PB. So this motion suggests that the regional school district planning board was invited to the March 2 meeting with faculty and staff, and it wasn't. I don't know if that meeting actually happened. It wasn't a posted meeting. It wasn't an open meeting. But the minute should accurately reflect what, what type of meeting was held on the second. The other thing in the minutes that is inaccurate is the third paragraph in that section B. Which, and, and you can go back to the tape and confirm everything I said, because that's what I did. I went back to the tape and listened to what the motion actually was. The third paragraph recites that Laura reported about the community relation subcommittee meeting. And it reads, was spent strategizing multiple forums and ways to inform community members about the regional school district planning board's mutual standpoint as a means of increasing overall engagement. That's not what Laura said. And again, the, the board was not invited to participate as a board in the meeting that I understand you've got scheduled for March 8. So that language mutual standpoint should be stricken from the minutes. It's not what was said. And it wasn't, as I understood it, what was intended to be conveyed. Which really leads me to my second request. So the first request is that the minutes accurately reflect what was said at your meeting. The second request, which is the more important and substantive of the requests is that you agree to postpone your March 8 meeting until after our March 22 planning board meeting. At which the three possible paths forward are going to be outlined by the research team and presented to both the planning board and the community. There will be no vote taken on March 22. There's no need, in my view, to have a, a Q and A or discussion with community members until those options are laid out for both the planning board and the communities of both Southern Berkshire and Berkshire Hills. And so I would ask, number one, that you postpone that meeting until after March 22. And number two, I would ask that you work with our community outreach subcommittee. Which includes as members, both Bonnie and Laura, both Bonnie and Laura are on our community outreach subcommittee and have been working very productively as part of that subcommittee to get accurate information out to the community and work on strategies for getting information in. So I don't think it's consistent with the spirit of our commitment to work together to both get accurate information out and good information in for you to be holding these meetings without that being part of a coordinated and collaborative effort of the planning board members, which again include four members from your school committee, including Bonnie and Laura. To do, to do this in a coordinated and collaborative manner. So my requests are that you postpone the meeting and that you work with us to develop the strategy to get information out, accurate information out and good information in. And that you not sort of create the optics of two districts working. I'll, I'll, I'll wrap up right now, Jane. Two districts working in opposition as opposed to two districts working together in collaboration. So thanks.
Thank you very much.
Sarah Sickitt, and I'm here. Two fold. Sorry, sorry, I'm not used to it.
We no longer teach remotely. I haven't done this in a while.
It's the owl.
Oh, it is. Sarah Sickitt, I'm both a staff member, a taxpayer in Sheffield, and a parent. And I actually came tonight specifically to thank the school committee for taking their time yesterday to come speak with us about what's happening. I attended all of the online meetings. I actually made my scouts listen to the one on Wednesday night. They didn't appreciate it. It was for a communications badge. And I have a lot of questions. So did they. Their first question was, where's the student representative? And if you know my son, he was pretty hot under the collar about it. The second thing is, the high school kids over there, they were talking about, we thought about a survey, but no one ever said this was potential for this type of school in a new place. It was more like, what would you like? Pie in the sky? Click, click, click. I'm interested in this, 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 and this. There wasn't a lot of really detailed information in the survey I figured out, that I filled out. And I felt really blindsided by this new type of school. And I'm sorry, I don't want to wait for a move the bus. Here's the unveil with the three plans available to you. Have you ever heard of grassroots and asking those of us who actually teach here, live here, work here, what we want? Jake, everyone came in last spring. I didn't feel really listened to. It was, this is what we're doing. And every time I listen to a meeting, I hear something different. So I was really excited that people came in and asked us what we thought. And we weren't really happy. We're really creative and we have a lot of great ideas about how this could work, but we haven't been asked for those either. So yeah, are we pretty upset? Great. I'm glad people are now listening. And I hope people who are on Zoom who might have a chance to impact this, we don't want to see the T-shirts in the pre-named school and wait till we reveal on the 22nd. We wanted to be asked earlier. We want to be asked now. We want to be involved. Don't show me a T-shirt and wait to move the bus and tell me what it's about. Ask us for a creative solutions to save money and combine our schools now, without charging Sheffield and other towns more money so Barrington can get a school built.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have my, my three minute timer. Anybody else back here? No? That's okay, that's okay. Is there anyone else on Zoom call that would like? Okay, Alyssa?
Hi, thank you for my three minutes to speak. I'm a mother of five children. I have a law degree from Stanford Law School. My, my girls have enjoyed several seasons of participating in theater at Mount Everett. This January, two of my girls from the Mount Everett musical. The school committee issued their extracurriculars policy in mid-February, halfway through the rehearsal schedule. For religious reasons, we cannot be injected or have invasive tests. It's a defilement of our bodies. In spite of my informing Ms. Regalbudo of our religious exemption, she's kicked out of theater without due process of law. The superintendent and school committee, along with all those who have enforced their policies, have repeatedly broken the law. No emergency justifies the violation of any of the provisions of the United States Constitution. No emergency order supersedes established law. No mandatory active or health order has any legal authority. These are unenforceable by law. In my case, you violated the Civil Rights Act by denying children equal educational opportunities based on their religion. You discriminated against them and have segregated them from their peers. You have violated your own anti-bias vision statement. This is not a welcoming place for all students. You've engaged in the unlawful exercise of practicing medicine with a license in a law. Require wearing a mask is a medical intervention. Vaccinations and testing are medical procedures. These may only be recommended by a licensed physician and may not be performed without consent. You certainly do not have the authority to require any of them as a condition for any school after school activities. The recommendation of the policy subcommittee plans to recommend tonight constitutes practicing medicine without a license. Keep masks going for whatever amount of time. It's also a deprivation of rights under the color of law, meaning that they pretend to have the authority of a sub-rights privilege protected states. You are not a lawmaker or law enforcer. You're a public servant. You must serve of message. Individual health decisions for our children, the parents, or the employees of the school district. It does not matter what your personal politics, concerns, the money that you receive from federal government. You may not infringe on the rights of others. Superintendent?
I'm sorry, you're three minutes down.
I got one or three minutes yet. Superintendent and school committee hereby notify you of my intent to file a claim that you harm you of violating law. Thank you.
Okay. Amy?
Hey there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I'm sorry, I'm just stepping outside. I'm at my daughter's PNO S N. Um, I, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. As you all know, I've been at a bunch of these meetings and felt compelled to respond to the previous commenter who has not been in attendance at any of the school committee meetings. When we have very productively and enthusiastically discussed mask mandates and vaccine mandates. And vaccine mandates are a thing in public school, as we all know. Vaccine save lives. And I believe that the, the previous commenter stated that her children do not attend public school, so I'm confused by that. But I'm very much looking forward to the update on the mask policy. And wanted to also just comment on how productive, to change the topic just for a moment, how productive participating in a focus group for the. I'm going to get the letters wrong because we, we have so many letters, but the the regional planning gorge, who's, you know, please help me with the letters, somebody. The eight villages, though, it was a really productive focus group that I thought was very useful. I participated in the survey as a parent. Thought the survey was also very helpful and useful. And I'm excited to see what they come up with and look forward to continuing discussions about that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Amy. I don't see any other hands at the moment. Okay, all right. Now, remember seeing warrants in this package.
There's nothing tonight.
So business manager report is not needed tonight. And business with district member towns, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we really encourage everyone who is interested in this planning process to come to the meeting on March twenty-second. I'm going to defer the discussion as to whether we go ahead with the March eighth meeting to the subcommittee report from the community relations and public relations report. So that gives you an opportunity to revisit our plans for next Tuesday and maybe hear a little bit about what happened. On yesterday. Okay, so is there anybody on the planning board who would like to add information for the rest of the group? There are quite a few meetings coming up. Friday is the public relations and outreach subcommittee, I believe at four-thirty. Next week, there's a education subcommittee meeting, trying to wrestle with the education outcomes. All of these are listed on the eighttowns.org website, and you can click right into the meeting. From there, basically, the message is, we hope that you go to as many meetings as you can. I think there may be a finance meeting coming up as well. The seventh? The seventh? So if you have time, or if you have a friend that has time to listen and can tell you, and I'm not sure, but you may be able to get recordings of these things if you care about them and you can't be there. All right. Laura. Did you want to say something now or during your subcommittee report? Do you mean to have your hand up, Laura?
I do. I'm so sorry. My, I'm having a little bit of a signal issue. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can you hear us? No.
Okay. I can't hear me.
We hear you.
We can just move on.
Laura, do you see my thumbs?
So assuming you can hear me. I just wanted to reiterate that we do have an eight, a regional school district planning board.
Turn camera off.
meeting for community outreach. And we will kind of be, I think, revisiting this issue that Lucy brought up in her public comment. So if anybody wants to slide on over to that meeting to sort of contribute to that discussion, I think that would be great.
Yeah, okay, so.
Hey Laura, turn off your camera. It might help your connection.
I wrote to her in the chat.
Okay, thank you very much for that standing. Okay, that was unfortunate. I'm wondering, we need to clarify whether she was saying that there is, and Bonnie, maybe you can tell me, a meeting of the, there is
Besides that, I mean, there's, we're not going to postpone it. There's other issues we have to talk about too.
Yeah, okay. All right. Like, when is your, your subcommittee?
Fifteenth.
The fifteenth?
For community outreach?
The eighth.
We, we have one, we have a school committee, community outreach meeting for the fifteenth. But then we proposed that Beth use her roundtable on the eighth. To talk about all things regional school district planning board.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
And is that confirmed, Beth? That's going to be your superintendent on the eighth?
What was asked was that we could use the, the community conversation with the superintendent, where I would be facilitating a listening session on behalf of the school committee. To do with how people were feeling about the regional school district planning board. That was my understanding. So I don't know how that's, that's my understanding of that, but that was the venue that, that was asked if could be used. The then there is a school committee, community outreach and advocacy scheduled for the fifteenth, which would be to put together the budget flyer. Which is number two out of the three flyers that we are doing this year to all homes to talk about. To share with those who may not have students in the schools or any taxpayer who would be contributing to the budget so that they know what they're investing in. So that's what the meeting on the fifteenth is for. At five o'clock.
Correct, right. Okay. So and I, I made my call out to other, the members of the planning board who wanted to add anything at the planning board time here, and I don't see anybody coming forward, so we can go on to the chairman's report. Just giving you an update on the search for a new member from New Marlboro, and I understand there is one, at least one application in the hands of the plant, the board of selectmen, and so I will be there on Monday evening at their meeting and see whether we succeed in appointing someone. And I will turn it over to item ten to the superintendent's report.
So in the, I feel like I've spoken enough tonight, and so I wasn't going to add anything here. But I'm sure other things will come up.
Well, I was just going to, I'm not sure where else on the agenda we'll hear what happened at the public health meeting that was on Tuesday. Are you going to do that, Bonnie, later, or should we?
We can, Beth, whenever you want to do it.
There is, so I don't know if you want to talk about it prior to the, there is something on here, oh, that's not the ad hoc, where's the? So we did have a public health team meeting that was purposefully scheduled as a check-in. We do them roughly every month. Right after the February break. We met with our team and we had a very, very good discussion and they shared with us a couple of important points, I think, and Bonnie can chime in wherever I, I, I don't get to, but one of the things that I thought was super encouraging is that the group doesn't want to disband, no matter what happens with COVID. They are turning their efforts to supporting issues around mental health and social emotional issues with the community and how we can continue to support. So you know, we all decided that we don't want to disband this group. We think it's a great way to to still be, have this community partnership and get the best information possible and share resources and share information. So I love that idea, and I think that was something that, you know, good things have come out of not such a good experience with COVID. So those relationships have been great. Then we talked about the data in the county. We talked about the tools that are available. Whether through the CDC, you can put in the county and look at the status and it gives you ideas around what level of you know, mitigation you should be thinking, considering. They talked about data in general. I think everybody, and the other important thing was that the reality is when people start inconsistently applying mitigation strategies, it'll work. So unless everybody stays complying with mask policies, which we know they're not going to do, they don't necessarily, it's not necessarily effective. So they think with the trends, the data, and the normalization of mask wearing if you feel that you need to, and that supportive community environment that it's okay to move towards an optional policy around masking. Did I miss anything?
No, I think the big thing that I like is that they want to continue working with us and work with us to make this shift to mental, social ways to help and ways to look at how we can help recruit for our children, all the things that have been lost. There's a lot of sensitivity to how much this is now central. It's the, you know, it's not all hunky-dory. We've got to look at it. I thought that's there. That they want to keep on engaging with us was really important. And the other thing I was surprised about is Berkshire County is still considered neat, medium in terms of COVID. We're not low, we're not high, but the transmission rate is at whatever, I haven't looked it up, the qualifications are for medium.
Well, that, that's what I think is interesting, because I looked at that and medium still says, you know, optional if you are, if you have severe conditions. It wasn't really what you think you know, might have been for medium. But yeah, I think, I think the, at least what I heard here when we talked about it last time was that people were concerned because even though the requirements have been lifted on buses and vans. You still are going to need to wear a mask if you enter a health office, and you are still going to need to have a mask on if you've had COVID. And for the five days after the same, those same requirements. So I think there's less of a concern that there'll be an environment where it's almost like a scarlet letter wearing a mask, right? And the other nice bit of information is that the SBREA took a survey amongst their, which is the faculty and staff. A little over a third, I would say. Forty percent of the staff took it, and they said that at this point, they felt comfortable having masking be optional. And out of that group that took it, they said, I'm sorry, that was sixty percent said that, and then forty percent followed up by saying they still were going to continue to wear a mask. So I feel like that's a fairly high percentage of people who are going to normalize masking. We've talked with faculty and staff at our meetings about how in the classroom are we going to have those conversations about normalizing that and making sure that everybody feels comfortable doing what's right for them and their own. So there's been a lot of thoughtful conversations around that. So I feel, I feel pretty comfortable with the information that we got.
You just reminded me one other thing. What, what they did say is they would help us because they're writing some documentation that we can then use in terms of how we make it that no one's stigmatized. Either without a mask or with a mask, that they, they felt that it was very important in the classrooms that we, you know, that we work with our staff to help our students understand, so it doesn't become a bullying issue or anything else. And they said they would share what they're putting together as documentation. I think we're so fortunate to have this group working with us.
Yeah, question. Just because this is a, just a point of order, like we're in the superintendent's report.
Yeah.
Should we be reserving conversations about more about this for later?
Yeah.
Because it feels like we're creeping into different
Yeah, we're going in the policy face covering discussion.
Okay, so I'll hold my comments. May I make a motion based on one thing? Couldn't we, this is non-political. Could we, I move that we send a acknowledgement from the school committee to our volunteers on the public health committee just gratitude for their volunteer and their service.
I'd say, look.
Yeah, and would you add that possibly Bonnie would like to craft that letter because they know her personally, and I think it would be nice
I don't even think like the checkers fell it.
Okay, so there's been a motion. Is there a second to that?
Yeah, Jim had it. And we accepted your
All right, so Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Danell?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Qualified, yes.
All right. Well, we're supposed to spread the wealth in the world. All right. And the curriculum and professional development coordinator's report?
I do not have a report.
All right, well, we will be very interested to hear the progress of your grants in the future. And the director of student services, Sandy?
Yes, I'm going to talk about health services right now. I think there's some information that I just feel will be timely and helpful for everybody. Obviously, we're just back from the break and we're continuing with our routine COVID nineteen pool testing, and this week we started testing those students who are also participating in extracurricular activities or unvaccinated and who were not a part of pool testing. That was conducted yesterday. As of this evening, so far, it looks like we have all negative pools, which there's fifty-two of them.
Oh.
Waiting for some final information, but it was looking pretty good, given the email we got from our nurse leader a little while ago. So that's good news. I wanted to be able to provide you with some information based on our vaccination stats. So at our secondary level, eighty percent of our students are vaccinated. Eighty percent. The vaccination rates are between seventy-two and eighty-nine percent based on grade level. So for example, seventy-two percent in grade six are vaccinated. And up to like eighty-nine percent in grade eleven. So that's good information. Upper elementary, grades three through five, currently forty-seven percent of the students are vaccinated based on the information. I just want to clarify, this is based on information we get from the Massachusetts Immunization Information System. And from the vaccination cards we've received, which is not a huge number of vaccination cards. And only if they received it in a certain place, might it be in the system. So we're trying to make sure we get the most accurate information. The addition of the extracurricular requirement allowed us to get a lot more information because that included a hunt over two hundred students. I think it was two hundred and twenty-seven students. So that allowed us to kind of synchronize some of the information. So upper elementary grades three through five, forty-five, seven percent. Lower elementary grades K through two was approximately thirty percent vaccinated. And with the list of the extracurricular students, I just thought I would add this in. The elementary students that are on the extracurricular list are fifty-six percent vaccinated and secondary is eighty-seven percent vaccinated. So that is the information there. We continue to increase the number of people who are willing and wanting to participate in the at home testing. Which is being provided by the state and federal government and each every other week, we're getting these home tested and they're sent home and their. Requests that they that all people there are participating test on Sunday. Or if they happen to be symptomatic, it's a good resource for them. So that's going very well. Since last week, we've had. Three students and one staff member positive that's been reported to us. So I just want to reiterate that's for. People in the district in the last two weeks, based on what we know as of tonight. Part of health services, mental health services. So we're really focusing on mental health and. I was really happy to participate in a public forum and we had a lot of conversations about mental health and I think you've heard me talk about it quite a bit here. Jane Smith had mentioned that the Southern Berkshire Public Health Coalition was meeting. Jesse participates at and that regularly. It happened today. That meeting was this morning. Here at Mount Everett and had good participation. There was probably close to twenty five people in the meeting. And talking about various concerns, resources, et cetera. There's organizations that. Were represented there. Including the Family Resource Center in Great Barrington and the Rural Recovery Group. And there were representatives from Berkshire Hills and our. Our school district as well, a number of students attended. It was great. It was led by one of our students, Daisy, who was here from the.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. The New Day Club. The New Day Club. So that was really fantastic. And she's working closely with a student from. Berkshire Hills, Tessa, who is lovely as well. And they were talking about what they need. What they feel like they need as students and they're going to be working together to maybe create a video. Just to kind of get the word out and start really the conversations. And. I talked to Daisy afterward and she was saying, you know, I don't think every. Our kids, our students all know about the resources that we have available. Like we've been talking about the warm line is. It's almost there. We're almost there. It's going to roll out soon. And then we have this universal health screening that I've been talking about and. She was excited about that. So we're going to meet with students soon to really hear from them. What do they feel like they need and how can they be advocates and supports for. Our students who are really having a difficult time. We've been gathering data. It is concerning. And we want to make sure that we're doing all that we can to make sure that they're safe and and have access to resources. We have a lot of them available to us. Want to make sure that they know about them and can access them and that we're aware and able to help identify supports where needed. That's my update. Thank you.
Bonnie?
Thank you so much. I just like this. One thing, will we be informing families that everybody is entitled to go and get four more free tests? At that, you know, the government website.
We did that when it first happened. I don't know. We certainly do it again.
There's a new.
New one again.
A new one. So especially, you know, some of the larger families, they knock them out in. You know, one day. So I think it's as of today or yesterday, you can go online and order four more free tests.
Thank you for bringing that up.
All right. Well, now we're on to. New business and unfinished business. We decided not to put anything in there this meeting because we have. Some. Subcommittee reports that may take some time and we wanted to, we've already been to a public hearing, so. There wasn't anything pressing that we needed to get to tonight otherwise. So let's go on to the subcommittee reports and. Would you like to say anything, Jeffrey?
Um, well. Thank you for coming back. If you guys joined the. Public hearing on the finance. The proposed budget from the administration. It's been very impressive from a subcommittee perspective to be in dialogue with Beth and her team. About the pressures of being mindful of. The the tough situation that our community finds itself given, you know, non-transitory inflation. How it's affecting budgets. We have, you know. A housing crisis. We have a employment crisis. And everybody's feeling this pain and it's really an amazing. You know, and we got this bid back that was. Kind of jaw dropping to see a thirty percent increase over what we were paying. And even in the face of this and this budget that's been proposed and accounting for this massive increase that hopefully will come in slower. Beth and her team have done an amazing job to. Bring down what was going to be a double digit percentage increase over the previous year. And getting that down to just under four percent. Where historically they've been at under two percent a year. That is an amazing feat. And it's a testament to the hard work of the staff. It's a testament to the hard work that the staff does to write grants, competitive grants, that I don't think the community sees. And since we have so many people here, I decided to shine a light on that in case you missed it. And I'm looking forward to seeing us moving forward and recommending a budget.
Yeah, that.
Thank you for letting me ask some.
Oh, yes, absolutely. You all work very, very hard. And we will be voting on budget next meeting on the tenth. Of March. So now the Community Relations and Public School Advocacy Subcommittee. Made a recommendation at our last meeting to. Allow. A public dialogue about the Regional School District Planning Board, quite different from. A public comment situation where there isn't interaction or discussion. And we had made that. A priority for. March eighth. And. We know that we've heard from Lucy Fraschler and we heard from Bonnie and I. Beth heard from her last week. About feeling that that was counterproductive and I'm, I think we should open. Give the Subcommittee a chance to further the discussion. To decide whether to go ahead with it or. And discuss further. What the committee and lead the discussion about how the committee feels about it. I would also maybe. During this time, Bonnie might want to. Without going into particulars about the. The invitation to have a die, a listening session with the. Faculty and staff, which was. Bonnie was there and Jim and Dennis. And only because we are the retired people who have our schedules under control. And I know that others would have liked to have been there. So. Laying a little bit of groundwork for. A discussion about. How we feel about communicating with our public.
Shouldn't we hear from.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
I'm going to, hopefully Laura's audio is working because I want to defer to her as well, but I'll just start by saying I unfortunately was. Out of town during the last meeting last week. So I missed it, but it's on my homework to listen to it. But I also, without even listening to it, I think it's a good idea to go ahead with the. Requested forum. If nothing else, just to provide information because it sounds like from another public comment made. Which is made very well, I think. Earlier tonight that. It seems like just more general information needs to get out. I feel the more information, the better. It sounds like some people were kind of still left in the dark, whether it be not being able to attend all the meetings or being able to attend all the meetings and not understanding. So. I personally see no reason to postpone the March eighth. Hearing or back and forth discussion. But again, I wasn't at the last meeting. So if something else. Was discussed or happened, Lori, fill us in.
Well, I apologize. It's easier for me to hear you guys without my my camera on me. So I'll just put that out there. Yeah, I I think the core intention of. Beth utilizing her roundtable forum was to really help drive. Community members to the March twenty second meeting. That's like really one of the core intentions to sort of. Encourage people's participation further. So, I mean. That's really. The heart of it. I I don't have, that's pretty much my very simplistic assessment of it. And. I just want to say that, yeah, I probably should have paid better attention to the minutes, but the word I used was neutral, not mutual. Like conveying information from a neutral standpoint. Yeah, that's pretty much. I I don't know if Bonnie has anything to add. But yeah, the idea is to get more participation in those bigger, full meetings and to, you know, if we want people to see these three, you know, scenarios. Presented on March twenty second, you know, this is a tool to do that.
I just want to interject here that. We, the way we ran the meeting yesterday is we did not give information. We were listening to people's thoughts and feelings. Because, and I think rightfully, it's. It's hard for us to have. I mean, we read a lot of the reports, but we're not as have the facility to. Hone in on particulars, but it was really clear that public comment at a public meeting. Is not a place where people really get to get into a conversation and that people from the the staff community. Were sharing ideas and feeling. That that it's been a very difficult for them to express their ideas to the planning board. And so. I didn't want to give the impression that this is an informational meeting because, and it's also not Beth's roundtable either. It's. She has allowed us. She's offered generously to moderate, but this is really our meeting. To listen to our community's concerns and. I I think if people are, I think we can keep it to a very. Civil kind of conversation. And then that we are going to be taking neutral stances unless we hear somebody. Saying information that's completely wrong. And of course, anybody on the planning board is welcome. To attend. It's a public meeting, especially the members that are from our five camps. So it's it's not a closed meeting.
I were asked if I wanted to say, but I'd rather eat. If Beth might have common first.
No, I appreciate that. I just wanted to be clear that I, this is. Again, this was the school committee looking for a forum to have a listening session. This is not driven by me. And I wanted to just offer to facilitate what people are used to as my community conversation time. To be. But I think Jane said it perfectly around what the intent was and around. And I understand the, the, the. Idea that people are concerned that there may be, you know, just misinformation spread with misinformation. But I think really. It's only to hear what people are thinking about so that. School committee can bring it back to the group and maybe that's how they can think about addressing it in the future. So. That's what it was. I just didn't want it to be an impression that it was anything other than that.
Okay, so now I, I believe it's important, I agree, Danell and Laura, for us. To go ahead because I think when we, and you know, Julie, you were there yesterday, Sandy, I thought you were. Yeah, I saw you there. My reaction is in listening to the staff. We've got a wealth. Of talent on our staff. And I'm so glad we did what we did because what came across. Is how much they want to be included in this and what came across were their ideas and their commitment. And I'm sorry, I know Jane, you and I have been advocating for two plus years. Of the importance of listening to the communities. And I think we steered clear because we don't have the final reports. This was really an opportunity for the staff. And I think the fact. What I heard loud and clear for those who live in our communities. They have no idea how they would afford. You know, increased taxes because of our buildings. So we're just, that was a real concern for people. There and you know, you come away with information, referring to what Sarah said. They want to be involved. And we shouldn't be shutting off the opportunity. To gather that information. And I know we took, I know Dennis was doing it and Jane and I took some. Real notes as to suggestions. And I don't know, Jane, if you were planning on putting that.
Yeah, well, I thought we should debrief and decide.
Yeah, synthesize the material and share it with whatever, you know, people who couldn't be there. But that was so important to have that forum. And I believe. On the eighth, it's the same thing. I know Jeff, you had originally suggested the idea of having questions ahead of time and all. And I think, you know, on the whole, we agreed that this is listening. If we hear loads of misinformation. That's an important thing for us to hear as well.
Yeah, I just want to point out that the format is not going to be like a meeting. So there can be a conversation. So say Lucy is there and hears something that seems inaccurate. She can raise her hand and and say something. It's not going to be. As formal as in our regular meeting. And I think that's. That's what the conversation is. And. And rightly, the planning board meetings are business meetings and they're not conversations usually unless we're voting on something. So.
I thought that was very good yesterday where they said, look, before we give you any input, we'd like to be able to raise questions.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, that's important.
Yeah, okay, so I would. Anybody else? Jim, was there yesterday?
I was there yesterday. I guess. My impression was that I was just totally impressed with the passion. That people had, that the faculty were expressing about what's best for our kids. I don't know if that's what the regional planning board is doing. I'm not getting any. Feedback from anyone saying that that there's anybody standing up and saying, I have kids who come into my classroom every day. This is, is it best for them? What do you, how can we do what's best for them? And so I think we have to represent that. That's what we're for, you know. I'm just really glad to be there. I hope you can do more with that.
Well said.
Yeah, all right. So I, let's. I'd like to take a vote on this, but Dennis, did you want to add anything?
Well, a comment I'd like to make is is that. You know, I think there's a time and a place for everything. And I I really. Personally feel. That, you know, the, the, the time and the place is going to take place after there's a proposal of some kind. That's going to be placed before the public entities. You know, which definitely should include. Not just, you know, the school committee members, but the staff as we had in that meeting the other night and so forth and so on. But I I think until this thing reaches a point. Where there's something tangible to talk about. You know, all we're doing is maybe extending it and getting a lot of people stirred up without really knowing what it is they're even getting stirred up about. You know, so I I really think that. That, you know, I I think we have to, in effect. Let this thing continue to a certain point. Before we get them a lot more active in, okay, let's now engage. Not only all the staff, but community members and everybody else to to really help us all assess. Is this a workable thing or is it a nightmare? You know? Because because right now, both of those things have heavy sides. have heavy sides on them, you know, that there's, there's people in each of those camps. But you're, you're not talking about anything that's quote a proposal. Let's talk about this is what we think we will do, period. Okay? And, and, and the, the whole idea of having this quote planning board between the eight towns that's involved was to come to that conclusion first and then come up with, okay, so is that something that works for everybody? Cause eventually this is gonna have to go before, you know, all eight towns and, and everybody else and so forth and so on. So, so I, you know, I, I, I don't think we wanna get ahead of ourselves. This is the only concern I have.
All right. Well, let's see what the consensus is on, on the committee about this. Um, so the most I'd take a motion uh about the open session to hear of people's suggestions, ideas. Uh, and we can say about the three models because there are, there is the full consolidation. There's the creation of the high school and then there's the collaboratives that might be established. Cause the collaboratives was one of the bigger items that came up yesterday. And I think if the planning board hears something about, we might want more elaboration on the collaborative options at the twenty second meeting, there might be still time to ask for that because it's not a closed situation how things are gonna be presented as far as I know. So uh, a motion has been made by Jeff to
He was motionless.
Okay, so Jim DePisa has made the motion that we continue as planned to hold the um open forum for um community members on um March eighth. A second from Denell. There any other, I think everybody's had a chance to comment who wanted to. So I will take a vote now. Art? And Jeff? James? Denell? Laura? Dennis? Bonnie? Jane? Yes, so. Yeah, I have an order here, so I don't miss anybody. So uh, we plan to go ahead with our forum on the eighth. It's open to all. And hopefully we'll have um, we'll gather some new information to help us go forward, especially for the planning board members um to um and we will uh send an invitation to all the planning board members who wanna attend to come so that um, there's no misunderstanding about what went on. Right?
It is scheduled at six, not five, just for that.
Six P M.
Conversation time slot is a six P M time slot.
All right. Going on to policies subcommittee, which is very busy and thank you, Dennis, for having the meeting on Monday so we could um
So what, what I'd like to do is uh, uh, kind of change the sequence a little bit. And basically, what, what we did the other night in policy, I, I think to kind of expedite us a little bit would be, I suggested, you know, if, if in your agenda, you, you see the little I and the little two I's together. What I'd like to propose is that we deal with the second two I's together first.
I move that we move uh C two in front of C one.
Okay.
Second by Bonnie, okay. Uh, let's see, I have a, I don't think there needs to be a big discussion, but we'll have a vote. Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Denell?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane? Yes. Okay, we are switching the order and we're going to do first reads.
Yes.
And then go to the policy.
Basically, uh, you know, in, in your, in your handout that you had tonight, you've got everything D A through D B G one. That D B G dash one, okay? And basically, these, I think what, what, what we uh, uh, decided in, in the policy subcommittee was that, okay, these we have looked at as a subcommittee and are forwarding them forward, you know, to, to, to the full committee, which is in the normal way that we're, we've always done things with our policy is that this will be the first read where if you, if in your handout, you don't have these documents, let me know and I'll send them to you via an email if for some reason you don't have them in your packet. And then what happens the next time around is we will then as a body actually vote on whether or not we wanna make accept those as ones that we, that we'll pick up. And it, and again, just showing you back then again on some of the history that we've talked about. This is all part of a major project that was started by N A S C last year to basically redo and provide a new version for all financial areas of, you know, of school committee policy. So that, then, so that's what I'm proposing that we do tonight is, is that you take those like we normally do. You go home and you read it, or if for some reason you don't have a, something in your packet, just send me an email and I'll send you a copy of that thing back. Okay, Jeff?
Um, just for our homework, um, is there a way to just get like the, the current versions as opposed to the proposed and so we can be side by side?
Yes, if, if you go, if you go to our website.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, basically, you, you will see what the current version is. Uh, and, and
I think I wanted an easier like red line copy.
I know, we, we didn't have. So if you just go to the, you know, S B R S D website, you, you can look up, you know, any policy like that. Uh, of our existing ones.
I don't, most of these are just cleaning up order. I mean, there's not.
I'm sorry, come again, what?
That we didn't really change any of these.
We, we didn't change any, any of those, as I recall. My, my, my memory was that we accepted all of those as, as M A S C had, had readjusted them. Okay. And, and uh, basically, as, as we went through the policy the other night, you know, s- some of these are ones that, that we haven't changed for so many years that it didn't even have a year stamp on it. It was those of you that were policy remember. About everyone in that D A, that, that D list that we're, that we're looking at tonight, basically all had something that I put on them that basically said, here's, here's the date of art of, of, you know, of, of when I sent it to y'all. And uh, and basically that there is no date stamp on our existing policy, which says, who knows? It was maybe done on, 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 you know, on a rock somewhere at some point in time. I don't know. Okay, so.
Bonnie has a question?
I'm sorry, this, this is just my ignorance of finance. Can you explain what the meaning is in three of them on using the term cost center level?
Well, we're gonna do that at the next meeting. I think on with the first read, we, do, do we discuss them in the first read, Dennis?
No, you take them home and read them.
Okay, the cost centers are typically like departments.
Okay, that's, all right, thank you.
So that said then, uh, every, everybody enjoy your night reading, okay? And let's, let's skip to the, the, then back to number one, which is now number two, which is policy E B C F A. And I'll tell you, this took up most of the policy subcommittee meeting. But it only took it up to the point where basically the policy subcommittee said, you know, w- we, we, we are unable to come to any conclusion on this. And what we think the way to handle this is to, let's stop talking about it and let's bring it forth, you know, in front of the entire school committees and, and, you know, and, and make that, you know, the, the people that decide on whether or not, you know.
We passed a motion which I'll read tonight. I sent you the minutes.
Um, I don't have the minutes with me though.
No, I do. So I'm gonna read you. After a discussion among subcommittee members as to if and when to suspend the policy E B C F A regarding mandatory face coverings. A motion was made by James DePisa that the policy subcommittee recommends to the full school committee that the mask mandate established in E B C F A in August be suspended on March seventh. An optional mask layering encouraged for those who are at risk. This recommendation stands barring a contrary recommendation from the health advisory group. Uh, in which case we would direct uh choose another date. It was um seconded by Art Potaki and a roll call vote was unanimous. Yes.
Right. Yeah. And, and the understanding was that, that with that in mind, that this is one that we could then actually you know, uh, we normally do a read and everybody, you know, then we come back and take a vote. But the, because of the timing and everything else, that we, we could, you know, have that discussion tonight and actually then do it. So go ahead.
Well, yeah, I'll move to strike, uh, I'll, I'll, I'd move to adopt the motion. May I speak to it?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, there's a lot of information that came out in the last week um, since we've last met with CDC changing their stance where they're now advising, unless you're in a high risk area that be masking indoors. Perch County as of today on the CDC website is moderate um thing. And then I think the other thing that's kind of leading me towards this is that the news that uh, there's the, the cloth masks unless people are wearing N ninety fives in a safe way, it's not really effective. And right now that it, it seems like a lot of resources, sorry, sources are leaning towards that, given the decline on that. Um, I think in the last meeting I asked, and thank you for getting vaccination rates, cause I was thinking like, are we headed towards better like chance for herd immunity? But given that the CDC has now changed its tune, like I'm not gonna say that we're in front of the CDC. So that's kind of my thoughts. I'm curious to hear what other people think towards this.
Uh, if I could make a comment?
Yeah.
In response, you know, what, what you just said, you know, I have to take some exception to. Basically, what you're saying is what a lot of people say, but what they are not saying is that what the negative part about the masks is, you know, base, basically, yes. Other than basically what they don't say is that what they, what those cloth masks still do is they actually keep you from making me sick. Okay, you know, they are just as good for that as, you know, this, this high end mask like you and I are wearing.
I take issue with that. And from what I'm understanding, and I, I should have brought cited data, which I don't have, so I apologize. But my understanding is that the risk of I'm not, I don't fully, fully follow this, but I, I think there is like greater protection with that.
Right, yeah, yeah. Well, both of them have a certain amount of rigor protection. The, the, the difference, the difference is you know, one's good for both ways and the other one at least keeps you from killing me.
All right. So given, given as somebody mentioned, we are not medical experts. We are following the guidance of the CDC of our medical, our public health team of keeping in line with other, what's happening in our region and trying to create an atmosphere where those of us who are at risk will continue to wear a mask until such time as it, it, it seems obvious that it's not necessary and make sure we make kids comfortable to wear a mask, especially second graders who have a three-year-old brother or sister that they uh, the family wants to make sure that COVID doesn't come into the house. So um we have a motion from James and we have a second from Denell and we have.
No.
Bonnie has her hand up.
Didn't Denell second?
I was just raising my hand. Yeah.
I'd like to speak in favor of this. I think, you know, it is, it gives us the ability to say at this point in time, we are suspending this face covering policy and we are substituting guidance um moving ahead. And I like that we're going to do it in a way that will quickly, if we're suspending double reads. Um, and that what we're doing is saying as of Monday, the face mask covering is optional. And given the feedback you've received from staff and what we heard from our public health group, I think this is the logical way to go.
Point of order?
Yeah.
Um, considering that we do not have a first read on this, do we need to table this motion? Entertain a motion for suspending a first reader?
There, there's nothing that keeps us from, from doing.
No, and also because what we're doing is suspending uh, a previously made um policy. So the policy states until such time um as the school committee.
But the, the problem that, that we have, Jane, is, is that the copy that, that is in the document is, does not have those dates that we added in that meeting. Okay, I, I didn't catch that until just when I started to read it now. When you, when you read the thing.
I, well, the motion we passed was for the seventh of March that we would go.
Yeah, but this, 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 the piece of paper doesn't say.
So amend it and we'll fix it.
Yeah, so, so help, help us fix it.
We'll take that motion and.
Where we put that in.
Well, wait a second.
I don't think you have to. You're just saying you're suspending this as of March seventh. So you don't have to put that in the policy. You're just saying the date you're suspending it.
Right. If you change your motion was timed. It says that as of, we are, the school committee is acting to suspend this as of March seventh. You had that in the motion.
Yeah, right. And, and in, in this, it says, will we remain in place until further notice, notice. We're giving the notice that it stops on the March seventh. So I think we were good.
You're covered. You are covered.
I just had a quick question.
Yeah.
Um, yes, I agree. It's time to kind of move forward with this. Um, do, do we know if probably they have not, is this enough time for our teachers, especially at the elementary level to prepare the kids? Um, maybe have they already been doing it? So, you know, the people that are wearing masks versus aren't like, you know, there's not that back and forth. They're not made to feel bad or people that are not wearing masks are made to feel bad. They're not, that there's no wrong answer here. It's optional and why?
Yeah, it seems to me that this discussion is already started.
We started having it um in the small group meetings with small groups of teachers, um, having those conversations. And then if this is to happen tonight, I will be sending out, you know, first things tomorrow. I'll be talking, doing all the messaging. The principals will be doing the messaging to families and the teachers will start having those conversations. It's all hinging on, um, you know, about what happens.
But the, the students have been prepared that there may be some kids wearing a mask and maybe not.
Correct. That's what's gonna happen. Right.
Yeah, and actually.
Don't want anyone to feel alienated.
Yeah, and actually.
Why are you not, it's Monday.
I had a book group today and, and it was clear from talking with the teachers that they've been talking about it and and how they're gonna make it normal and how, you know, they're going to have conversations like, you know, you make decisions with your family at home every day about, are you gonna buy lunch? Are you not gonna buy lunch? This is the same thing. It's your family's decision, what works best for you. And so we're gonna have people with masks, we're gonna have people out masks. And, and we're not gonna ask people, why did you wear one or why didn't you? Or it's just.
And, and we're not going to ask people, why did you wear one or why didn't you, or it's just, it's.
It's like coloring your socks.
Oh, Bonnie.
Since we have Jesse here, again, you know me and putting him on the spot. What have you heard in terms of staff and their readiness for this change? To work with their kids?
Certainly at the secondary level, a lot of kids know what's going on and are aware of the policy meeting. And so discussions that are restarted in classes about the possibility of having masks being optional and. How we move forward, and so I get the feeling from a lot of teachers today that. You know, I'm going to ask people obviously to have conversations with their whole class again. When a lot of these conversations have already began to talk about, and again, there's some kids who are. Ready to take masks off and there's going to be some kids that aren't. And I'm confident that in the classroom that they'll be able to feel comfortable with whatever decision they make.
You know, Bonnie, there were fifty people on this meeting of the, of the policy committee on Monday, so forty. Some odd members of the public, parents got a chance to say things, we heard a lot from the public, it was really.
Can we ask the same thing of Charles, who I see is on?
Yep, thank you Bonnie, I was going to say, there you go neglecting me again, you're going to be sent to the principal's office. I see how it is, I know, no, I'd say the sentiment among the elementary faculty is similar. Although people, obviously because students are younger and, you know, you don't want anyone to feel alienated or uncomfortable. A lot of elementary staff, although they are in favor of the. Giving, you know, families the right to decide and making a mask optional. A lot of them have also said that they're going to continue to wear masks. So that students and so on in their class, if it is a relatively low number, do not, do feel solidarity and do feel, don't feel like the odd child out, et cetera. And then we talked about a script, of course, an age appropriate one, pending what decisions school committee makes tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And you're never detected.
Yeah. Bonnie, you have your hand up to speak?
I do, I just wanted to really express my appreciation that there's so much discussion within school ahead of this about. Affirming people's personal choices around this, it's just so important and it's a conversation that extends to so many aspects, kind of working off of what. Julie was saying, so yeah, this is, I'm really glad that everybody's kind of on the same page about that.
Right, all right, so I'd like to have a vote, well, that's, the public comment is over unfortunately, so.
Oh, that was a comment.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe that was a thumbs up or something. All right, okay, so Art?
Yes.
And Deb?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura? Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane, yes, a momentous occasion.
Yes.
Jane, I still tag on a couple of things about this because it wasn't appropriate to the motion, but.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Two things I think for, that are relevant to this conversation that I think we need to put on as a future, it's soon to be future comment. Is our recent policy on extracurriculars.
Yeah.
Now that the mask, I think we should be looking at that again and seeing if there's a change that we should be looking at. The other thing I'd like to ask is, knowing that the guidance of. You know, if somebody is sick with COVID and they come back, they need to be masked for five days. I'm wondering if there's something that we can do from a school committee level to make sure that there's appropriate masking. Knowing that K N ninety fives, if we could have a supply of them for the school when kids come back for the five days. We have loads of them, then that doesn't have to be a future thing, but maybe there could be, I didn't even know this, I've got kids in the district. But maybe what we can do is maybe an outward campaign when announcing this that one coming back.
We have plenty of masks to share.
Definitely, but they'll let the families know, because I didn't know that was.
Yeah.
We just heard two parents who didn't know.
And they're K nine, it's a supply of K N ninety fives, not the surgicals, okay, got it.
Yeah.
That's good enough.
Do they have K N ninety fives for little kids?
They do. They're smaller than us.
All right, so I neglected to, let's see, we personnel and negotiations will have something to.
Oh, it's going to be a really long report, we have already three more meetings set up. And Beth, do you confirm whether we're beginning at one o'clock tomorrow?
Yep.
This is what we were doing, all right guys, it's one o'clock tomorrow.
But that's just us.
Just us.
Yep.
Here in your office, if you'd like. Oh, would you?
My door is always open, yeah.
The candy jar.
Also the candy jar.
But there is a zone.
There is a zoom option.
Yep.
For our, okay, so one o'clock tomorrow, since it's just us.
Yes.
Okay, in your office.
Yes.
All right. So team, that's it, is Bob Kilmer still on? Yes, he is, Bob, it's, if you can do it, one o'clock tomorrow.
All right, so building and grounds?
Nothing for me.
Okay, so Jim, do we have a date for this? We have a date, but what's the time for them to, two o'clock?
Two o'clock next.
On Monday. On the seventh?
Yep.
Oh. All right, for the superintendent evaluation. Mid-year discussion, then we will be presenting on that following meeting.
Okay, that's three days later?
Well.
It could happen.
We can, we inspire to, the curriculum subcommittee meeting, I did want to. Bring up the issue of the curriculum subcommittee because. Those tend to happen during the school day and I was sensitive to the fact that. Some of you can't attend at that time and I didn't, I wanted to get a sense of. How we proceed without excluding members.
Why on that? I don't think so.
If you want to be there, we can change the time, did we hear?
Well, I think I'm on the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, so like, I'll do my best to get it back, but.
Yeah.
Are you? No, 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 but, but it was, there were in the past lots of, quite a few members who showed up because they were. Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's, I just want to be inclusive and.
What time are they usually?
Whenever.
Whenever, I mean, we can make it whenever, that's why we're asking.
Oh.
Well, we don't even have, you know. We haven't set one yet.
Yeah, that, that's why I brought it up prior to setting it, I wanted to get a read from this group about.
If you would like to attend, we will make the meeting mature.
So I'll make this official, if you are interested in attending and you are not able to come during school hours. Would you please contact our esteemed leader here and let her know that you'd like to come and.
I will set the time accordingly.
She will set a time that suits the folks who would like to be there, because it's.
Do you want to truly give us a deadline? So that you can set this meeting.
Oh, sure, let's make the deadline Monday, because I feel like beyond that, you're not going to remember anymore, right? If you want to go, you're going to send that email right away.
What is it supposed to be?
All right. You'll be there Monday anyway.
So I did not put the discussion of the advisory council COVID subcommittee. It is something we could discuss tonight, but I would like to postpone.
Executive minutes review?
Well, that's, that usually happens later in.
No, 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 you just.
I gotta skip over it because I think I'm, we're, we're not, it didn't do anything. And it's not.
It's an annual meeting anyway. It only happens once a year.
Never highlighting that.
So I would like to get to adjourn as soon as possible.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there anything on the other side?
No.
Okay.
I have some, I have a public comment, I'm an attendee here on your Zoom call.
Well, unfortunately, public comment is in the beginning of the agenda on item six and. We tend not to stick to our agenda, were you on the call earlier on?
I wasn't, I was not able to join the call until about six forty-five.
Well, we have been here since five o'clock and I think that it, we can wait till we're meeting next Thursday. We'd be very happy to have you come on in the beginning of that meeting.
Well, you might want to hear what I have to say, because I have a notice of intent to file an insurance claim for wrongful acts with the.
Well, we, I'm sorry.
That's all right, if you want to cut me off, that's fine.
Yeah, I think, I think, no, we will not entertain that comment right now, thank you, appreciate your attending.
You will be served.
All right, thank you. Okay, a vote to.
Adjourn.
Adjourn. Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
James? Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane, yes, all right, we are adjourned at seven forty-three.